I'd like all this meeting of the Brooklyn City Council and Boarder, Mayor, John, you can do the role.
Erin Geraskey.
Erin.
Evan Tansky.
Erin.
Sue Broden.
Yeah.
And Brian Chackney.
Yeah.
Steven Coyle.
Here.
Andy Selberg.
Here.
Ed Boojen.
Here.
And before proceeding any further, I just want to let everyone who is viewing this meeting know that we are aware of audio issues. We are working with a temporary system again tonight, and fingers crossed that everything will be in place when the City Council resumes in September. And just a reminder to anyone speaking in the microphone, if we turn our heads to make eye contact with people, our voices are fading in and out. So please just try to talk into the microphone as I'm not doing right now. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and opening remarks by Aunt Councilman Selberg.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two weeks ago, we had Memorial Day, a national holiday. Also say it's the beginning of summer, but it's actually a day to remember people that served our country, gave their lives. Two days from now, it's Flag Day, just another day that's kind of just as important, maybe as big of a holiday, but we still kind of have to remember the flag. On acres, they did a display over on Ridge Road, ironed the flag. In a couple of weeks, you'll see instructions starting at, it's Memorial Park, another flag display. So it has been, take a couple of minutes or a couple of seconds now for reflection, for a moment of silence, and that's it. Thank you.
We have minutes to approve from the May 8, 2023 regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
One second.
Sorry.
Two minutes. Erin Geraskey.
Yes.
Evan Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Broden.
Yeah.
Steven Coyle.
Yes.
Andy Selberg.
Yes.
Ed Boojen.
Yes.
And next, we have a guest. Mayor, would you like to introduce our guest for tonight?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. But yes, we have the Brooklyn City School Superintendent, Dr. Jake Clares, with us tonight. And we was able to attend the State of Schools several weeks ago, and Dr. Clares is outstanding judge. So I invited him to come this evening to share at least a portion of that with City Council and with the city. So, Dr. Clares, thank you for being here.
Mayor, thank you so much. Council, thank you for having me. I'd like to acknowledge that we have a couple of board members at the meeting this evening. And so, thank you for having me today. Just want to say real quick, thank you for including us in the Memorial Day celebration. I really appreciate it. And our kids there, Mrs. Broden, better? Yeah. So again, thank you very much for having our kids, using our venue. Really appreciate it. Thought it was a great, great event, and hopefully we can be a part of that moving forward. In speaking with the mayor over the last couple of weeks, one of the things I wanted to try and get into, a habit of doing, is prepare, is to presenting to the council, just some of the updates with regards to the school system. I think it's important that we keep that open line of communication moving forward. And so, thought a great way would to just kind of do an abbreviated version of my State of Schools back in April. For the last couple of years, we have started a strategic plan in which really started the first year of the pandemic, 2020, in which many, multiple stakeholders, community members, staff, administrators, trying to really determine who we were as a school district. We came up with a vision, mission statement, and core beliefs. And you can see up here on the screen, this is kind of the general start of it. We also created something the first year called Portrait of a Hurricane. Part of the reason to do this was to really talk about what we want our graduates to look like coming out of the school system. One of the main things we talked about was this really had nothing to do with scores or college application. It was more about the qualities that we want our students to have walking out the door. Part of it is, this becomes a pre-K through 12 initiative. And this is what our staff and our administrators are building for our boards and a lot of the supplemental activities that we provide for our students. Looking at the second part of our strategic plan, we developed five pillars in which every year annually, we develop action steps surrounding those pillar communities. You can see there academic achievement, growth, social motion, wellness, community engagement, communication, career integrity, and finance and district operations. And so, rest of the presentation, we'll talk a little bit about some of the initiatives and some of the focus areas that we have, that we have this school year and also moving into next school year, which support those five pillars. One of the things we really want to focus on is keeping and increasing our district enrollment trend. Our biggest enrollment was back in 1314, when we had approximately 1,400 students enrolled in the district. We have increased over the last 10 years, but we are seeing a steady increase back up. We did, like many school districts, took a bit of a hit during the first couple of years of pandemic, especially when parents are younger, parents decided to bring their kid home, they go preschool, they get back the next year before they went kindergarten. We're starting to see our enrollment trends moving up a positive direction. And we're hoping by E, by next year, we're right around 12 or a little bit above. Part of this increased opportunity is also to make sure that our students are participating in either athletics, clubs, different activities to keep them active and participating in the school community. One example is we recently started a, our city co-ed bowling team this past year. And so, we're hoping to continue to provide other opportunities for our students to participate and be part of the school community. Focus two is early literacy. Again, this is something we saw significant impact with the pandemic. Especially those first two years, we would have students enrolling in the district who struggled with typical social activities, like students like that. So, one of the things that we are focusing through our special development efforts, really pre-K through three, is those early literacy initiatives. Try to get our kids caught back up. Our pathways, our second, our third focus area, presented last year that we really have, look at our kids in three specific buckets. Students are either attending a two- or four-year university, our students are entering the trades, safety forces, military, some type of vocational trade after high school, and then we have students who are going to the workforce. What we have found with what students who are saying they go to the workforce, we see them struggling with making a decision on what to do and how to actually get to livable, sustainable employment. So one of the initiatives that we had this year is we focused on our seniors, we created the Brooklyn Career Connection Academy. And that was specifically designed for our students who were struggling a little bit with credit, but also had co-councilors and our administrators of high school that they're specifically going to the workforce. So, had a lot of different activities surrounding trying to get them ready to join the workforce. One of the culminating activities that we had in the spring was we had a College and Career Resource Fair. And at this resource fair, we had different companies, wage law, illuminating company, we had trade unions there, trying to get our seniors in. And truthfully, we had some community members that also showed up to the Health Resource Fair to help our students engage in that life after, after high school. So, three big areas that we're focusing, obviously, our two- and four-year students attending college. We have our AP classes, it's something called College Credit Plus. If you're not familiar with College Credit Plus, it's an opportunity for our student while they're in high school, you can enroll early in seventh grade. We don't have any seventh graders enrolled that enrolled as early as seventh grade in college course. So students can go to Pricey, LC, Cleveland State, lots of Akron, we used to have some students take classes at Akron. And this will allow our students to earn college credit while in high school. Blair Career Center is a wonderful resource for our juniors and seniors, allows our students to access those specific trades or specific careers that will allow them to either get certificates when they finish 12th grade or will allow them to take the next step in some type of adult training, trades, H-bag, whatever it may be. But Blair Career Center is a wonderful resource for our students. Talk a little bit about some of the programming, and I mentioned a couple of these before that we have going on in the district. Mentioned the Brooklyn Career Connection Academy, that's where our counselors, again, and our high school administrators, they focus specifically on students entering the workforce or at least have indicated that they're not sure what they want to do. And that process allows our students to train their skills, resume ability, interviewing, things like that, so that we can help them connect with employment after high school. Arts and Innovation Academy, this is our, we're looking at focusing on our gifted education. And truly, we do that in our grades, three through eight programming, knowing that we have students who need that extra push, who want that extra boost. And so, this is a specific program that asks of the support gifted education. We have different models based on the different grade levels, and eventually, grades three through seven, these students then funnel into the other courses, AP courses, Blair Career Center, CCB. But it's a specific focus on trying to identify our kids from grades three through eight for gifted education. Also, looking at our students who may not qualify for gifted education, but also are enriched and looking for that opportunity. Brooklyn Digital Learning Academy, we're in year two of that, and that really came out of the pandemic. We had students who struggled academically from either coming to school for whatever reason or coming to, or earning credits. And so, the Brooklyn Digital Learning Academy is specifically designed and specifically targeted for students that are in credit recovery. And this is our attempt to help our students earn the credit so they can graduate on time. And so, I think last year, we had somewhere in the neighborhood of 300-plus courses, students pass through the credit recovery program, which allowed these students to either get caught up for graduation or graduate on time. Last program I just want to mention, this is another kind of little stem off from the gifted and accelerated curriculum. We're starting, we have Project Lead the Way in grades seven and, and we also have it in ninth and 10th, which then typically students enter Polaris or potentially CCP courses. This coursework is starting in grades five and six, in which it's kind of that precursor to our project Lead the Way design and engineering course in grade seven. Another portion we're also looking at is a career exploration program. One of the things that we've found with our intermediate middle school students, they haven't had enough exposure to what they want to do or even know what it means to, "I want to be an engineer." But do they even know what it means to be an engineer? Do they know what it means to be a doctor? Do they know what it means to be a fireman, police officer? So part of this course also will be teaching our, allowing our grades four, seven students to explore different careers. To explore, I mean, we look at careers from the standpoint of career is the final goal, and there are different pathways to that for different college, trades, other vocational opportunities, or even the workforce. So we're looking at getting our kids thinking about different programming, different careers, different options earlier on, so that when they enter eighth and ninth grade, they can begin that process of developing graduation plan that fits them. State of Ohio has specifically mandated schools, they're called success plans. So we're hoping that these success plans will start earlier in grades six and seven. So again, it will kind of travel with them all along their career and career history. So it's just that continuous development, continuous exploration of what do you want to do when you get older. College Now, last thing is we, this is an organization that specifically works with our senior families. That's a scholarship application, applying for college. So, that can be very complex for, complex for me when I mentor my son. So it's one of those things where this organization specifically works with our seniors. They can come in during the day, they come in evening with our families, and it's something that they access, and it's really been very helpful. Specifically because students can access scholarship opportunities after they graduate. College Now stays with them and allows them to explore those opportunities. Focus number five, attendance. We really saw a sharp decline in attendance, and I think this is across that area for students. And not necessarily missing specific ones, but we've seen an increase in party. We've seen an increase in kids staying home, and it's kind of that catch 22, we don't want kids coming to school when they're sick. We also want them coming to school because we know that's toward the, so one of our initiatives next year will focus specifically on encouraging and helping our families and students that struggle with the pandemic, kind of from a positive perspective. And focus seven here, obviously, finance, district operations, and safety. District has been awarded, I think, five grants now from the State of Ohio for safety and security. We've been investing in additional cameras and additional other safety measures in the school district to kind of get us back up to speed. So that's been a positive thing for the school district. Obviously, we passed the renewal levy in November, and this allowed, this is an avoid deficit levy that was five years previous. Current five-year forecast is positive right now. We have the next renewal levy scheduled to, has to be voted on by November of '25. So it's still another two years for the next renewal levy. Also, just kind of very quickly, we've, the board has hired a new treasurer, Robert Sheerheart is coming to us from the Lyria Public Library on Lorain County. And so, Robert will start as a transition in July and officially will be on the book August 3rd. We've tried to, again, through cost savings and attrition, trying to cut costs. A lot of things we've been doing over the past three years have been addressing our facilities. And the district money came back in '20, there were some immediate needs that had not been addressed previously for whatever reason. And so, the past three years, we've been addressing things like updated parking lots, some fencing, furniture in the buildings, security measures, I guess you mentioned through the grant, but we're working on now through the Board of Education to look at kind of what's the next step in terms of potential addressing our facilities. Our high school was built in 1957, and so we know that at some point, we're going to need to try to renovate and look at that physical structure. It's in really good shape now. We don't want to get to a point where 10 years or so that we have catastrophic failure of systems. So we're starting to look at that, starting to have those conversations in terms of what does it look like in terms of potential renovation of either the high school, auditorium, main gym, and then we're also looking at some potential renovations at Stadium Complex. And the last thing really is, this is really always a focus, we have a great relationship with fire department, our police department, Safe House of School, City of Brooklyn, and we want to continue to stress and to engage with our community partners in terms of making our, our school district the best. So, that being said, I appreciate your time. I kept it under an hour like I promised. Any questions? I don't know if that's permissible.
Yeah, feel free.
Well, thank you very much. Have a great summer. Appreciate everybody. I can unmute this presentation to the mayor, if he wants to disseminate, but thank you so much for having me. Appreciate it.
Are you in about 70, 60 votes? 75 minus 7.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're close.
67. Yeah. Second rate. Thank you so much, Dr. Clares. At this time, we will have the first public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say pertaining to an item on our agenda, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less. Okay, I don't see anyone moving. So we will now have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. And we will start tonight with Recreation Board, Councilman TLC.
Thank you. All stackers for the Suburban Recreation League is for U9, U11, U13, and U15. Registration July 1 through August 1. Resident fee $60, not resident $70. Practices begin in August, games in September. Register online at www.brooklynrec.com. Senior Center list of events for June are as follows. June 20, Dan and Zola orchestral rehearsal, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. June 21, Lunch and Learn, Respiratory Therapy and Infection Prevention, presentation by Pleasant Lake Billings. This is a free event starting at 11:00 a.m. June 23, Summer Park Walk, 1:00 p.m. Media Marquardt Park, or sign up at Senior Center for a ride to the park. Sliding less than a mile group walk in the park, shade shelter and restrooms available. June 26, Casino Bus Trip, 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Bus will leave from the Brooklyn Senior Center to the downtown Jack Casino, Rockland noon. Round bag lunch provided on the bus on the way down. Bus will head back to the Senior Center at 4:00 p.m. This is a free event sponsored by The Avenue in Brooklyn Point. Register at the Senior Center. June 27, 12:00 p.m. This prize senior will be here to host the annual free event, non-money prizes. Register, call 216-635-4222 or visit the Brooklyn Senior Center. Recreation Board meetings for June, July, and August are canceled. I have to close my report.
Thank you. I have three reports. I would start with the briefest one. The Board of zoning appeals, June meeting has been canceled due to a lack of applicants. The second one is the Planning Commission met on Wednesday, June 7th to consider two items. First, the Cuyahoga County Public Library final site plans were approved contingent on the city engineer, Cuyahoga Soil and Water Conservation District, Cuyahoga County Public Works approval, and a lot split approval. And there's a 16-page PDF that is located on the Planning Commission part portion of the board doc. So if you're interested in seeing it, there's renditions of what they expect it to look like both inside and outside. Very exciting, in case you haven't heard me say that before. Very exciting. And second, the commission recommends that confirmation of the approval of the recreation of Veterans Memorial Plaza to be located generally on the property currently known as permanent parcel numbers as noted in the request. The next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for July 5 at 6:00 p.m. if needed. And my last report is for the Committee of the Whole, we met tonight at 6:15. The Committee of the Whole recommends confirmation of the Planning Commission approval for the creation of Veterans Memorial Plaza on the various parcel. Passage of Resolution 2023-16, passage of ordinance 2023-13, and ordinance 2023-12 is on first reading tonight. Chief Milkie and Director Roig Booth discuss the need for an additional part-time employee to be shared by the mayor's court and the police record. That is just on first reading. The committee regularly meets at 6:15 prior to the scheduled council meetings, and as Mayor Menker always says, and all are welcome to attend. Did I miss anyone's committee meeting, committee reports? We will now move on to reports of council. Councilman Geraskey.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to say thank you to all the who's ever able to participate in the Memorial Day parade this year. It was a wonderful show of support and remembering our fallen men and women that have borne the uniform of battle and other military acts. This past week, I was able to award a Transcenter Barber Shop located on Ridge Road near Memphis my community recognition award. As I stated before, it's just a simple thank you, especially to small businesses that are servicing in Brooklyn. There I meet Ken, Erin, and Nick and Drew, and they've been a part of the community for seven years now. They survived the COVID epidemic, and through the grit and determination, they're still thriving. They've also worked with our local football program in Brooklyn for a few years now. Again, congratulations to them. I'd like to also say thank you to all the residents that participated this weekend in the community of Rockdale, be it by hosting one or those that shocked them. Thank you. And I want to finish my report with a wish to all the fathers in Brooklyn and a happy Father's Day this upcoming Sunday. And that concludes my report.
Councilman Tansky.
Good evening. Join us for the New City Center Open House on July 22, from 9 a.m. until noon. Take a tour through, take a tour through our really nice, modern-looking building. It's a great new asset for a city that can be utilized in many years to come. Look forward to welcoming you to the New City Center. Just a reminder that the basketball and tennis courts remain open throughout this period. First, the hours are as follows, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Resident only, hours are as follows. Monday through Friday, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Sunday, 12:00 p.m. is working. Residents must register for an account at www.brooklynrec.com and obtain a wristband at the Recreation Center to use for courts during these hours. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to Dr. Clares for joining us this evening and presenting his update. As a proud Brooklyn graduate, I love hearing about all the great things happening in our school district. June is nationally recognized as Pride Month, a month dedicated to celebrating the LGBTQ+ community and our allies. Each year, celebrations and marches are held around the world during this month. It originated as a commemoration to those who rioted in 1969 in response to police raid at Stonewall and a gay bar in New York City. Over the years, pride has evolved to parades, festivals, concerts across the globe. The meaning of Pride Month goes far beyond celebration. Pride represents love, confidence, and togetherness. During June, many choose to display their support for the LGBTQ+ community by displaying a pride flag, which is an all-encompassing symbol of unity, hope, identity, and support, similar to the way some may display a flag representing our country, state, or favorite university. I want to personally extend my appreciation and offer special recognition to Brooklyn resident Benjamin Robert. Benjamin posted on Facebook that he was looking to increase the number of pride flags in our community and that he would personally purchase and deliver a flag to any resident who requested one. When I last checked in with him, the number of responses was well over 100. Thank you, Benjamin, for stepping up and making our great community even better and more inclusive. I was contacted by a few residents regarding the electrical supplier changes. It appears that even though they had opted out of Nopec and chose a different supplier, they were inadvertently opted back in through Nopec's aggregate program. If you recently switched suppliers using If you recently switched suppliers using apples to apples, please double-check your billing statements to ensure that the correct changes have gone into effect. Note that this may take up to two billing cycles. Be sure to stop by the library Wednesday evening from five p.m. to six thirty p.m. Karan, Brett, Heather, and Jason Hubble are hosting a meet-and-read session. There are two new school candidates running for election this November, and they are looking to earn your vote. Lastly, don't forget about the summer concerts in the park. Oncology is performing starting at seven p.m. this Wednesday. Ring a cheer. Don't miss out, because these events are a lot fun. That concludes our report.
Councilman Stone.
Thank you. Good evening. A condolences to the family of Bob Sangio and Mary Joan, a passing Bob mother. In tonight's edition of the ever continuing saga of the LED conversion, here's what happened since the last time we met. The non-residential streets haven't completed. That includes Northwood by Ridge Park, Idlewood by Brooklyn Point, West Bed Off, which is a little street by the entrance to the Plain Dealer, American Road, and part of Keaton. Brooklyn Memorial Park was done, and that turned out really nice and upgrade for lighting. Hopefully, some of the vandalism minimal down there. All the streets from Bed Off to Delora East of Bridge were completed. So that area's completely done, because those four streets on the other side, on the west side of Bridge, were done prior. First energy is currently done with Idlewood, Melody, Kennedy, Summer of Kennedy. They're currently working in Brook Lane, Sunny Lane, Shade Lane area. And that's going to be part of the planning, where I'm trying to get all the streets west of Bed Off that run off of Bed Off done. That's probably another hundred fixtures that have to be converted. Keep Brooklyn Beautiful, the Friends of the Brooklyn Library and Local Garden Club will be holding additional speaker sessions. We have not determined dates and time shift, but as soon as we find out, we'll let people know. Next fresh fruit and produce we give away at St. Elias will be on Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, starting at three thirty p.m. Once again, please don't get there one or two hours ahead of time. And the last thing is cleanup dates for Keep Brooklyn Beautiful are up on volunteer.aab.org's website. Look for Brooklyn. You should find us. And there are a number of events that if you'd like to help us kind of clean up the town, we're more than welcome to have you there. The hours are also good for community service. That concludes my report.
Councilwoman Bucci.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll thank you, Dr. Clarence, for the very informative presentation and for being with us here this evening. We appreciate it. While you were speaking, I, something came to mind that I want to mention. And that is, in my opinion, one of the best decisions that was ever made by one of our school boards was the decision to join Blair's Joint Vocational School District. It was extremely controversial at the time, and those school board members were attacked. And it got very ugly. The reason they were attacked is, under state law, when you join a joint vocational school district, your community, in order to pay for their participation, is assessed two mils. And this is something that the school board or the local community has no say in whatsoever. There were a number of residents who believed that they should have the opportunity to vote on it. However, there's no provision in the state law for them. So it got very ugly. They were personally attacked. And to their credit, they helped burn, because they knew that this was in the best interest of our students and our community. And I know that we frequently have the highest enrollment per capita of all the communities that are part of Blair's. So kudos to that school board who took a brave decision to move forward even though they came under attack. And hopefully, everyone has heard that there is going to be a special election on August eighth. These August elections really have hardly anybody turning out to vote. Not many people are aware of them. It's very easy to forget, because it's right towards the end of summer. A lot of people have other things on their mind, plus somewhere around town. So I would encourage everyone to please request a vote-by-mail application now and then that way you've got it in. Some important dates. The deadline to register, vote, or change your address is July tenth. Early in-person and vote-by-mail voting starts July eleventh. August first at eight thirty p.m. is the deadline to submit an application for vote-by-mail. Voting in-person early at the Board of Elections ends on August sixth. And then August seventh, all vote-by-mail ballots, mail anywhere in the U.S. must be postmarked by that date, which is the day before the election. And if someone wouldn't get it in the mail by then, you can drop it off in the drop box at the Board of Elections by seven thirty p.m. on Election Day, August eighth. So please, you know, keep this in mind, because this is an important election. And, you know, hopefully, we'll have a good turnout here in Brooklyn. And also, just another reminder of the newer requirements for ID. So make sure you do have appropriate ID if you are going to vote in person. Regarding landscaping on Port eighty, could we just get a little bit more information? I don't know if Mr. Verba wants to address it or the mayor. Like, who is this new landscaper and exactly what are they going to be doing? And how often to maintain those tree and shrub beds?
Do you want to help me? I'll address that in my report.
Okay. And I guess if you wanted to address my second question, I just want to make sure that the service department employees are finding the money, that they, I know safety was a concern of theirs. I just want to make sure that it's addressed also. And I heard over the weekend from a resident who lives on one of the side streets that runs between Ridge Road and Brookwood. And of course, because of the terrible traffic backups on Ridge Road because of the construction, they were using Brookwood to come out and then go on Bed Off. And now Brookwood is under construction. Do we know what the deadline is or something, how long they're going to be on Brookwood? I don't know if Mr. Verba can tell.
They just started.
I know.
Yeah, they just started today tearing out. So maybe the short street shouldn't take that long, but they're also tearing out at the same time they're starting on Elizabeth. So probably two to four weeks.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll guess that along. And finally, I did just want to comment on the flat rate on the acres property on Ridge Road. It is very impressive. And I just want to thank the residents and the leadership of Brooklyn Acres for providing for that. It looks really nice. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Just briefly, while I'm thinking of it, if anybody in this room would like an application for vote-by-mail, I have them in my car. I didn't think to bring them in. But after this meeting, I could quickly run out to my car and get them. You would have to fill it out and mail it in. And then the actual ballot will be mailed to you. But I do have them in my car. That would be one step that you can complete tonight. Just two other things quickly. First, you heard several council members mention their favorite activities that are going on. But almost everything that was mentioned tonight is in our new Brooklyn News. They were delivered last week. One of my favorite publications, kudos to anyone who is putting this together, because it is awesome, but it's a wealth of information. Don't recycle it yet. Read it and then tuck it somewhere in a drawer where you will know where to find it. A lot of good information is always in it, including a list of dates. But some dates that aren't in there. The council has decided to have in the park with council meetings this summer. And the first one will be June twenty-seventh. It will be at six p.m. at Marquardt Park. And it's just meant to be a casual get-together where you can come and talk to your council members. So everyone is invited again at June twenty-seventh, six p.m. at Marquardt Park. Mayor, your report.
Thank you. Also, I thank Dr. Clarence, as I already mentioned, for coming and for speaking to us this evening and sharing that it wasn't pre-read, because I was at the State of Schools and you were not on that. But I appreciate that. It's a wealth of information, a lot of good information that was shared tonight. Also, I want to thank the schools as well, in particular, the marching band, for attending our Revenant Kind ceremony here at City Hall. And also for being once again a part of our parade. And also, the school board was part of that as well. And then a lot of the schools allowing us to use the stadium for the ceremony was, I heard nothing but rave reviews for having it there. And of course, our fairway did an excellent job as well. Also, I thank the schools for the invite to the graduation, to watch one hundred and twenty-five graduates graduate on May the twenty-sixth. And also, Dr. Clarence talked about the college credit plus. Well, four of the graduating seniors actually earned their associate's degree while they were at Brooklyn High School, which is pretty impressive. That was well ahead of where I was when I graduated from high school. So kudos to them. That's a great program that the city and the schools, or, excuse me, the schools are able to offer that. In the coming days, as Mrs. Bucci just talked about, royal landscaping, they have to do some work there on the beds and the grass there. The grass is not grown as they had anticipated because of the drought-like conditions. But hopefully, that's over after this week. There's a lot of repairs that still have to be done for that. The landscaping company that we're partnering with will not touch any of that until that is all finished. And they are just going to be focusing on the beds for this summer. Mr. Verba and myself discussed the grass cutting. And he had a meeting with his service department. And they want to cut the grass in those quarters. They've asked to keep that in-house. And so that's what we're going to do. It'll think that has to be cut. The grass in the newly seeded portion for a while. And we'll monitor that as it goes. And if they ever have any issues, we can always outsource it. But per his department, speaking with the managers there, they want to continue moving forward with that. Oh, I think the residents who came out for the garage sale this past weekend, there were over a hundred and twenty-plus sales that took place across the city. I was able to visit a couple of them with my son, so thank you for all those that participated. And hopefully, it was a success in your neighborhood. The former City Hall Police Station is currently being demoed. The demolition actually began today. They've allowed two weeks for that demolition. They should have the entire building down in about seventy-two hours. So this time Thursday, it should be completed, completely down. Then they'll have, of course, have to clear everything out. A groundbreaking ceremony will take place in the new library on that property on July the thirteenth. In addition to the demolition of that building, we're also going to be demoing the old press box and the scoreboard that's near the M-one baseball field. That was part of the capital project for M-one Field Renovation this year as well. But since the demo company was already there, we just added to that to save some time and ultimately some money. Under regards to this building, there are still quite a few punchless items that are going on in this building. The rest of the A V controls, as Mrs. Craig just mentioned, are coming in hopefully later this month. But Panzika is working through those each day, and hopefully, have everything wrapped up by the end of summer. The indoor pool skylight replacement project is complete. The indoor pool is reopened. The balance of the pool roof will be replaced beginning later this month or early next month. However, this will not affect any of the pool operations. As was already mentioned, repair work has begun. The concrete portion is the road projects. Our chair is wrapping up. They've now moved over Brookwood and Elizabeth Lane. And of course, that construction will take place throughout the summer. The asphalt repair work is mostly complete on West sixty-six. There's just some punchless items that have to be finished. And on Traymore, they still have to adjust the castings, but for the most part, those two streets are finished up. They should be back to wrap those things up for the coming weeks as well. As far as the construction on Ridge Road, per the contractor, Flowerdale, will reopen on June the twenty-sixth off of Ridge Road and the I-four eighty eastbound entrance ramp. Off of Ridge Road will reopen next Tuesday, the twentieth. The project is moving forward nicely. A large section of concrete has already been laid. So we're all looking forward to the Ridge Road project being completed. The Brook Park Road construction continues to move throughout our city and will stay in our city for most of the rest of the summer. But Ridge Road will be complete prior to them arriving at the location of Brook Park Road. Gray Line is the company that is setting our new Memorial Plaza. They will be here next week to set the cannons. And they plan on returning in a few weeks after that once the South Parkside House the city purchased is torn down for the completion of that part project. Everything should be done by late summer, early fall, if all goes as planned. The bridge that goes across the creek in Veterans Memorial Park has been installed. And the final asphalt connecting the two trails through the bridge has been laid. So backfill and this is like the final components of that project. I've been down there a couple of times. It's beautiful. So I encourage residents to head down there and utilize the trails down the bottom part of our park. Chief Milky has completed one-on-one interviews. Panel interviews with the upcoming police hires have been set up for there this month and into July. The final set of citywide signage project planning has begun. This is phase two of the city signage. The bid opening took place last week here at City Hall. Only one contractor bid on the project. However, the bid came back thirty thousand dollars less than the engineers' estimate. Our engineers are currently following up on references with that contractor before they send out our recommendation. If that bid is accepted, the work will be complete by late fall. Our new business this evening, we have a signed memorandum of understanding from the Aspen Union for the new recreation coordinator positions that council approved a couple of weeks ago. And also promoting Rachel Liskowski to one of these new positions. The second coordinator position will be posted internally, and then externally, if they're qualified, applicants are received. We also have written authorization from Melanie Zamori to remove the garage in her house at seventy-four seventy-six Memphis Avenue. This is another ongoing saga with that property up there. This is to obey the nuisance. The garage is leaning into the neighbor's property. And our planning commissioner has a imminent threat to that property. So we do have written confirmation from Mrs. Zamori in that house. But, excuse me, that garage will be taken down in the next couple of weeks. As Mrs. Craig mentioned, the summer edition of the newsletter was mailed last week and should have already arrived. There's a lot of information about upcoming events taking place in the city this summer. Additionally, we will be joining with the schools starting in the fall. We'll be combining the city's newsletter with the school's newsletter. And so that will be arriving at one time. And so this will be another joint effort with the City of Brooklyn and the Brooklyn City Schools. So we're looking forward to that. Inside of your newsletter, you'll find many events throughout the summer. There are meet the mayor dates that will take place throughout the summer. This is historically mayor's event down in the past, and so we're continuing that this summer. And just to give an update on what's going on in the city. The first one will actually take place on Thursday, June the twenty-ninth. It'll take place right here at the new City Center Plaza. And there's one scheduled each month throughout the summer. And again, all of those dates are listed inside of your newsletter. So we welcome everyone to come out and to be a part of that to keep up what's going on with a very busy summer here in our city. Mrs. Craig asked me to discuss very briefly the two notifications that are on the agenda this evening. The first of which is a fifty thousand dollar reward from the county for the Community Development Supplemental Grant. This is going to be used for our exterior home maintenance program through the building department. We had an overwhelming response, so I think we have close to a hundred applicants of people applying for these funds. And these are to be done, these are distributed for various home repairs. The building department will be in touch with you if you've been awarded that grant. And then the second one is the acceptance of five thousand dollars from Walmart for the police and the fire departments. And this is to be used to purchase safety equipment. And this year, we'll be purchasing smoke detectors as well as the next round of the weather radios. We purchased, I think, thirty of them to start off with, and those have all been distributed, which is a good thing. And so we will be purchasing more of those for those to be distributed. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? Exactly, what is the scope of the work for the new landscaper that's going to come up? Is it just basically weeding or?
Yes, but it's not really. It's taking care of the weeding and making sure that the weeds stay control inside of those beds.
Okay. So are we responsible for the watering once Royal is relinquished of their obligation? Or they meet their obligation, I should say?
Yes, and we have a side contract with that same landscaper to do the watering as needed. Yeah, it won't be said that they will do long-term with the water and do it as needed.
I do not have any notifications from directors. Just confirming if they shake the pen. We will move on to the notifications on tonight's agenda. The first one is just information. Fifty thousand dollars awarded from the county for the Community Development Supplemental Grant. The monies will be used for our exterior home maintenance grant program. The second notification will need City Council's acceptance of five thousand dollars total grant from Walmart to the police and fire department. Your motion, who votes up?
Sir.
To accept the grants? Eric Rouski?
Yes.
Kevin Tielce?
Yes.
Sue Roden?
Yes.
Steven Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Sandler?
Yes.
Edie Bush?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is a council confirmation. This is what I spoke about in the Planning Commission. It's confirmation for the approval of the creation of the Veterans Memorial Plaza. This is what I spoke about in the planning commission. It's confirmation for the approval of the creation of the Veterans Memorial Plaza on various parcels, and the parcels are always in, in, or back.
Move to confirm?
Sure.
To confirm the approval, Aaron Baroski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brode?
Yes.
David Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seldar?
Yes.
Eddie Pucci?
Yes.
And then in bold business under legislation, we have Resolution 2023-15, adopting the tax budget for the fiscal year 2024. This is on second reading tonight. Under new business, we have Resolution 2023-16, assessing unpaid costs of abating nuisance and hazardous violations of Section 521.14 of the modified ordinance. This is for last year's work, and it needs to be adopted tonight so it can be sent to the auditor. So this is on first reading with a request for suspension of the rules and adoption.
And you still have to suspend the rules?
Sure.
To suspend the rules, Aaron Baroski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brode?
Yes.
Steven Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seldar?
Yes.
Eddie Pucci?
Yes.
To adapt, Aaron Baroski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brode?
Yes.
Steven Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seldar?
Yes.
Eddie Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-12, establishing the position of a part-time clerk. Police records coordinator is on first reading tonight. Ordinance 2023-13, amending Exhibit A of Ordinance 2022-47, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time, and administrative employees not marketing unit of the city of Brooklyn of Ohio. This is on first reading with a request for suspension of the rules and adoption.
If you suspend the rules?
Sure.
Any questions?
I was just going to say if we could read into the records so residents, everyone, change this.
The simple answer is yes.
If under part-time recreation, the new range will be $10.10 and $17. And this is again, based on the analysis of comparable communities. Part-time recreation exercise instructor will be from $11 to $30. Then part-time jailers will be from $16 to $25.
Any other comments or questions? To suspend the rules, Aaron Baroski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brode?
Yes.
Steven Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seldar?
Yes.
Eddie Pucci?
Yes.
To adapt, Aaron Baroski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brode?
Yes.
Steven Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seldar?
Yes.
Eddie Pucci?
Yes.
So at this time, we are, we will have the second public question. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and the address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes from now.
Rock Slade, 66 Jersey Avenue, Service Square. First, I want to talk about the payment on West 66. Headed contact is Service Square twice. They were out when they adjusted the castings of the manholes. Left the manhole covers off, but left the jobs. Some of those manholes, source put down to date from 12 to 16, 18, 19. Somebody would have fallen for those. We would have major issues. The Service Square writers found out. There was another inspector, I believe, I don't think he was with the contractor, took some photos, and then the contractor did the same, very same thing the next day. They came through on the sheets. They took down a couple of large branches of the trees. Now, we're very happy that the job's done. I'm just bringing this up because I don't think that that contractor has any concern for the safety and can't help that they're doing something on other sites in the city. So I bring your attention. I don't think they should be considered for any further risk. So put this out to me. Number two, I'd like to know if the city has a contract with CCI for cutting grass. I was sending a couple of short videos to the residents. There's been shade, shaming in that area over there. City workers sent out there every week on a check for the last month. They're out there cutting grass on CCI property. It's a multi-billion dollar company, and I'd like to know if we have a contract if the city can agree first for a worker going out there doing that. The Service Square manager that, it's amazing, and I'm throwing it out there because of the appearance of it all. The only CCI property they've cut is within ice shot of this home. You drive down Memphis Avenue and look right next to the service department, the grass is probably 14, 16 inches high. So I think that's probably still needs to be addressed, and if the city cannot agree first, that's a whole other level of issue. Lastly, I'd like to commend firefighter and army sergeant Dennis Rogers. He did an absolutely fantastic job of memorial decorating. Probably the best speech I've heard, and I was told that he actually left the day and looked Texas right here for the point. He did this city very proud. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Pickard, RDOs, 3439, 3439, Athlet Deaf. A friend of mine told me today, he saw workers, county workers or whatever, welding on a Southwood Bridge, Southwood Avenue Bridge over 480, if anybody else was going on with that. Years ago, over the years, all the bridges on the 480, 71 and everything were getting painted regularly, and things like that tend to go out of the way. And follow up on the graphic, just for everybody. I grew up in Brooklyn, here in Brooklyn, it was too late. I was delivering papers on a bicycle. It was bad, melt-like, crazy. With all the construction around here, this is as good as it gets, unfortunately, we have to live with it. And really, follow up on the police car rant that we're, excuse me, going for, that was coming through, it was still farther up the road. And you're talking about the new signage for the city of Brooklyn. Are those signs going to be as high as the old ones, or are we going to down where, just current activity, just see the signs? Thank you.
Let's start the 4201 document. And before I start out my question, I did want to make one comment about Polaris. I have two nieces, and my oldest son are Polaris graduates. And I think a lot of people look at Polaris and think of it as just an industrial trade school. And I just wanted to point out that Polaris has a lot more than just mechanical trades. They also, my son took e-commerce and marketing. My niece took web design and graphic arts. There's a lot of very focused study at Polaris, and I think it's very valuable for 11th graders who are not even looking to go into the trade. It's an excellent start. My son did earn, I think it was five credits at Tri-C just by taking the program. So, and this was over a decade ago, but I'm sure they still have similar partnership with colleges around town. So please, people, consider that. It was brought to my attention this weekend that over at Memorial, Veterans Memorial Park across the street, by the splash pad are bricks, they're memorial bricks that were purchased in 1997, and they have names, and it looks like it was part of the, that big plaque park reopening when they redesigned the park. There's also a time capsule. I was up there for a birthday party and kind of got across it because I speak at council meetings, and they said, "You have to go to council meeting and ask about this." The time capsule, I believe, looked like it was slated to be open in 2027. Will those things be moved? Where will they be moved, and do we have plans for them? And finally, the last question that I was asked that I think is very, a very poignant question is, if we are, if we are going to do these things, big parties and memorials and dedications, but we don't maintain them, what is the point of doing them in the first place? I know that the people I spoke with were very upset at the idea that the time capsule would be moved or otherwise in the way of the new construction. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Very nice. I'll go backwards from this and Mr. Murphy coming in. The time capsule will not be moved. It's part of the plan staying where it's at. It's actually going to be highlighted and enhanced so people know that it's there, that it's not being moved. As far as the papers, we discussed this a couple of weeks ago, have to explain again. So those will be removed because they're not part of the master plan. However, we're going to alphabetize them. We're going to offer them to people who want them back, and if they don't take them back, we're going to utilize them in some way in the update for the parks. They will be reused. I don't know what's happening on the Southwood Bridge, Mr. Murphy, but we will find out. How does the police counter very goes at is due to federal funding, and so we have not heard anything on that yet. It'll probably be quite some time before we hear anything from them. The signs, the phase two of the signs, they're all different sizes that are out there. I can try to dig up what those look like, and I can have with the next council meeting, but they're all different sizes and shapes because they're going in different parts of the city. And then, Mr. Verba, if you wanted to address the questions that were directed to the service department?
Sure. Sure. As far as the payee knows, as everyone knows, we have a new engineer. They, they contract out their inspectors to another company called QCI. And we were having problems not having the same inspectors show up on the job and so on. I think we finally worked all that out now. We have one permanent inspector that's currently on the job on our chair and Brookwood as well as Elizabeth Lane, excuse me. When I was made aware the inspector was not on the job, left the job to go to another street, and he should have taken care of that. I received an email from Mr. Slivery. I responded. And then they did it again the next day. Again, these were emails. If I didn't have my phone, I wouldn't have been aware of it, but I did. I had my email on my phone, so I was aware. So we did contact the inspector. The inspector, what happened was they, the company left that street, went over to Trainmore to finish the castings over on that street, left the manholes open. The inspector then went with them, so there was nobody there, so they were exposed. Talked to the engineer. They are now, the inspector as well as contractor, they're going to be covered, and that shouldn't ever happen. But again, we're trying to work through, we didn't have a permanent inspector on the job. So we're trying to work through that. As far as the branches being knocked down, that's commonplace in construction, whenever they're doing a street. And as I drove through West 66, a lot of these trees aren't even city trees. They're trees that are actually on acreage property that are overgrown on the street, and they have, they'll knock down trees. Friday was a very busy day for service. We had over 270 pickups. We had several guys off on vacation, so we didn't have anybody to go back and get anything. We're going to do that today, but I guess Dickers already took care of that. But that's common as far as knocking down branches. That's never the occurrence with construction. CCI property, as all members of council knows, it's very hard to get things done with. CCI with our representative, been contacted her several times throughout the last, I don't know, 10 years about cutting CCI property. They never cut the property by me. They said it was on the list, so therefore, service department just started cutting it. It's only, it's not a big area at all. They do it on their way to cut through the Southwood, cut through. They also years passed and cut property that wasn't CCI property. What CCI does, they subcontract that out, mowing contracts. And every few years, or every year, we get a new company or a new contractor, and they don't seem to know what to cut. And again, I've gotten nowhere with them. We do have a new representative named Ryan Collins. I reached out to him actually on Friday to express that none of the CCI property has been cut yet. And again, this is commonplace. We always have to hunt them down to have them cut it. He responded. He was on vacation Friday. He responded to me this morning. He actually gave me the areas that are supposed to be cut. And the property that has been addressed near my house is actually on the list this year. So we will not be cutting anymore. CCI is going to cut that. I'm going to reach out to Mr. Collins again, try to get a timeline of when that property is going to be cut. Any further questions on that?
Do you have any other things? Just a couple of quick things. Hopefully, we'll have better luck with the new representative because I know that we've had a frustrating relationship. Did we, did the service department also cut, like, where it goes up a bit off down Winter? I know that some of those residents cut that.
Yeah, I mean, like, and again, some people cut their own.
Right.
You know, so no, we never, we spot, we spot cut a few areas. I think we done the summer for the the area behind the Eastman or on the Eastman, somewhere lying in the backyard. And then we done that a few times in the past as well, just because they were having parties there and it wasn't cut.
And did we cut that this time, or is it?
We have not cut, we have not cut anything this year yet.
So just over by Shady?
Yeah.
Okay. So a couple of things. If you could please check with Mr. Butler, I don't think the citizens of Brooklyn should be subsidizing first dibs. And, you know, I don't know why we can't cite them, like, we cite other property owners and/or, I know this would be much more complicated, charge them back like we charge others.
Yeah, we, I think we had discussions about that path with the building department, Mr. Butler. So we have staff made tomorrow. We can ask them that again. I will say that the representative reached out to me within, you know, he was on vacation on Friday. He reached out to me this morning at 7:30. So hopefully, we'll have a better relationship when we can get this taken care of.
And do we have a date when they're going to cut these properties?
No, I'm going to try to reach out to him and actually get a date. He's still working on it with his subcontractor to nail down the areas, but he did have a blueprint of the areas, and it seems like all the areas that are CCI property should be cut finally.
Okay, if you could keep us posted, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Tansky?
I want to piggyback on Mr. Verba with CCI. And I know Andy Seldar says enough of this with CCI. Just another thing that goes on every year. We have enough amounts of residential properties not being cut, and we got to go tell them to start grass cutting. This is a billion-dollar hump. You know, if the only thing that these companies know is to put them on record writing letters, the mayor, I'd send another letter to this billion-dollar company and say, "Look, this goes on every year, every year, time after time. Grass gets long, residents complain, and it's just repetitive, it's over and over and over." That caused Mr. Verba to have work, that caused the residents to complain, and the only thing we can get back up here now. Keep writing letters, keep writing letters and documenting. Hopefully, something's going to turn. Second thing, when Mr. Artino brought up, it was a very good point. On and off-ranks, we have to write letters to get on and off-ranks fixed. The bridges are terrible. I drive, everyone of them's rusty. They're not sanding the last of these things, and then when they fall in, and they say, "Well, we should have done something." Well, too late. The states, I don't know the directors, all of them, in District 12, why aren't these bridges, maybe you can write another letter, Mr. Ron, and why these bridges are not being sanded? You used to see those parks, and the bridges, they get carried. None of them are being taken care of. I don't know what's going on with the state. It's just, it seems like the highways are just being like... I want to piggyback what Councilman Steve Coyle said about NOPA. The residents get letters in the mail from NOPA, especially from NOPA because they're the ones that are taking your house, putting them in there, coming. That happens. That what you called before it happens. You have a right to go on apples and apples and pick who you want. You are not subject to their rates, and their rates are higher. You go on apples and apples, you will... You go on apples and apples, you will see that some of these rates out there are cheaper. So if you see a letter come to you, don't hesitate to call, even though you might not think they're putting you in it or you are or down the line, call. And then get on apples and apples and start picking what you want at a lower price. In the end, you'll save money. Those manholes. I had a friend fell down on those manholes. Pretty deep, broke his neck in wheelchair for life. Now, if a kid falls down that, they got a real problem. I don't know, and Mr. Burko, I pray you for getting on right away, but these construction companies know not to leave open holes, open. Something is going to happen, and it's going to take one. So Mr. Burko, thanks for getting on there right away. Mr. Slattery, thanks for mentioning that and seeing that and letting us know. Secondly, Dr. Clarence, I want to elaborate on these college bills that every student in Brooklyn schools need to take advantage of these college courses. Don't realize, not only to boost your education, and my son took advantage of it when he was little, but the tuition that you will save along with your parents is a ton of money. The earlier you go, you could ask to come out with close, what a master's degree. If you go early enough and get on it. I urge all Brooklyn students to get involved in those college courses. In the end, you will see when you can start pulling a master's degree at 21 or 20, the amount of money you look back and then you say is unbelievable. But again, and thanks for bringing it up, Dr. Clarence, that's very important. I push it every day out there when I'm out there telling the parents, take advantage of it. It's a great thing. And that's all.
Are there any?
I'll be sure. Just to kind of echo Mr. Burko's comment about the new rep with First Energy, Ryan Collins. He's good to work with, only been working with him like four years. He emailed me this morning at 6:00 AM. So that's why my son has started moving along with some of this stuff. There's still been some focuses and stories. They're not exactly going to be working in the same direction. But Mr. Collins, it's a good guy to work with. So hopefully, we have issues over it all. Thank you.
Okay. Just to get back to the property that was brought up that was on shaking. They used to cut, CEI used to cut, if anybody's familiar with, there's a big part of land there that they used to cut. And it was not part of CEI's property. So when they were informed that they weren't supposed to cut that by who knows who, then they stopped coming back to shaking land. So for like the last five years, they've never cut back there. No matter how many times I told them it was property, CEI's property, they never came back there. So hopefully, Mr. Collins, he has the blueprint now, he can quit this inspect sheet every year, and we shouldn't have any problems.
Any other comments?
I just have one additional thing in regard to the contract for the, on West 66. I did speak with Mr. Henry Rossoff about this and told him that obviously that was unacceptable for that to happen. They did put cones around the manhole cover, which is not enough to do that, and he's aware of that. So this should not have happened. And I believe Mr. Burko responded quickly if he could do that. But by this conversation with Mr. Henry, I was not happy that that happened. But it did, and it's been taken care of, and so hopefully, looking forward, this will not happen again.
And that contractors that work for the city for the last five to 10 years have all been very good. They're also doing the project down Brook Park, so they've been around for a long time. So they, but again, I think with the inspector, not having an inspector on the job and leaving it like that was unacceptable, and that's been addressed.
I'll be very brief, just to end on a positive note, what Mrs. Gregor brought up about the papers. Right after we had the presentation on the master plan for the park, I think the mayor and also Frisher, Ruthsey. And I don't think that everyone realized like the extent of some of those papers and how meaningful they were to people, and it stressed the importance, you know, that is part of our history. And I also know because I was on the Parks Committee, that very detailed records were kept at the time. And Mr. Ruthsey did share with me that they were able to find all those records. So we've got very good records on who purchased them, what it was. And so I think it's good that people will have the option if they'd like to take it back and maybe put it in their yard. But for those people who don't want to take that back, I think it's important that we do keep it somewhere in our park, and that's a definitely important thing.
Any additional comments? If there is no further business, is there a motion during the meeting?
So will.
Second.
To adjourn. Erin Barosky?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Brode?
Yes.
Steven Coyle?
Yes.
Andy Seldar?
Yes.
Eddie Pucci?
Yes.